Welcome to the February 13th, 2023 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. This time, I will call the meeting to order, and I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up tonight, we have a fun presentation. I'm excited to be able to welcome former councillor and vice mayor Elaine Zanotti back to the chamber tonight. And we have a little token of our appreciation, we'd like to present her. I've got a little bio to read, and some nice things to read, and then I've got an award for you, Elaine. I heard you were gonna had like five, 10 minutes if you wanted to speak. Is that here? We'll just take a picture. Elaine Zanotti was first appointed to the city council in 2015, and served two additional terms, and was appointed as vice mayor by the city council in April of 2021. She grew up in Stillwater and graduated from Oklahoma State University in 1994 with a Bachelor of Science degree in family relations and child development. After moving away for almost 10 years, she came back to Stillwater in 2005 to fundraise for OSU. While working for the foundation, she opened up Zanotti's Wine Bar in downtown Stillwater, one of the real pillars of our downtown rejuvenation at that time. There was really not much at all happening in downtown Stillwater. In 2009, she started working with Meridian Technology Center in an extension education and community development role. After selling her part of Zanotti's in 2014, she continued to serve Stillwater and served
There was some rough ears in there.
the Stillwater community on a variety of boards, committees, and initiatives, including The, yeah, the reward for the work that goes into a position like this is, doesn't co-developing and organizing the Mary Main Street program in 2019. While serving as councillor and vice mayor, she was on Stillwater's Economic Development seem to do it justice most of the time, but Elaine, I think, everything I've heard from Advisory Committee and Land Development Subcommittee. This year, Elaine stepped down from her role in the city council to continue her economic folks around the community with your role at the chamber has been, everyone's really excited about it. development and quality of life efforts within our community as the new president and CEO So I think the respect of your community is certainly a reward in itself. of the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce, a role that she's already hit the ground running All right. in, and we're very excited to see her in that role. Let's move on to item four on the agenda, which is the consent docket. Elaine loves this community, and she's the epitome of service and giving back. Is there question, comment, or action on the consent docket? So I am honored to present this award of appreciation to Ms.
I would like to pull item 4B.
4B? Elaine Zanotti for her outstanding vision, dedication, and commitment to excellence
Yes.
Anything further? in Stillwater.
Motion to approve consent docket with the exception of item 4B.
Thank you, Elaine.
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve the consent docket minus item 4B, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the consent docket is approved, absent item B. Items removed from the consent docket.
I wanted to visit a little bit about item 4B. Specifically, there's a, these are several things that were required to approve on an annual basis. The last one caught my attention, Minority Women in Business Enterprises Utilization Plan. We approve this thing every year, and I just had some general questions about it, and I learned some things today about coming technological changes and things that are going on. I'd like to receive a report at some future meeting about this particular item, and how it's implemented, and what the results have been, and some of the coming changes that might actually result in more minority and women-owned businesses getting some of our business.
So would you like to table these items until we're able to get that report?
No, I'm fine approving the plan. It was my opportunity to ask for a future report.
Sure.
So I move approval of item 4B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4B, please vote. Let's approve with a vote of four to zero, and we will ask that staff comes back with a report on those items. I appreciate that. Thanks, Councillor Clark. All right. Item seven, public hearings. 7A is received public comment regarding a request for a map amendment to rezone 619 West 12th Avenue, Washington School property from O Office to P Public. Ms. Jacqueline Porter.
All right. All right, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Jacqueline Porter, city planner, presenting on behalf of our lovely planning department. The first item I'm presenting, as stated, is a map amendment for the property located at 619 West 12th Avenue, also known as Booker T. Washington Schools from Office to Public. The subject property is located south on West 12th Avenue between South Knod Block and South Hester. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. Southernwood Wood Park is located to the north, and Stillwater Early Head Start is to the east. Here's a street view, Google street view of the property looking south off of West 12th Avenue. The current zoning of the property is office with public located to the north, and RSS zoning to the east and south and west of the property. Here's a few images of the future land use map of the subject property. Future land use maps are used to project the desired uses of the community at the time of the adoption of the comprehensive plan, which is our 2030 comprehensive plan. The subject property is zoned commercial along, also along all the way, the southern portion of West 12th. All right. As you all are well aware, the subject property was graciously donated to the city. Rezoning this property is another step needed towards the city and the community's goal of refurbishing and revitalizing the historical black school to become a placemaking location in our community once again. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Counsel, any questions?
Jacqueline, if you can go back to the 2030 plan, I think this is an interesting point to be made. That south side of 12th Street is, on that point, is not currently zoned commercial, correct?
Correct.
What the planners at that point thought, well, this might go to commercial. This property itself has actually been on the market for several years for commercial development, and never sold. And there seems to be no other indication that commercial development on the south side of 12th Street there is imminent in any way, but I just, I think it's interesting with, you know, I love the C-3 plan and the future land use, and I think it's instructive to what we do here, but it's also a, this might be what happens, this might be what we like to see happen, and not necessarily this is definitely what's gonna happen. This is one of those cases where certainly the public use of this facility seems much more appropriate, in my view.
Any other questions? This time, I will open the public hearing. I don't have anyone sign up to speak on this item, so I will close the public hearing. Jacqueline, was there a planning commission recommendation?
Yes, planning commission recommended approval of a vote to five to zero.
Thank you, councillors.
I move to accept the planning commission recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second to accept the planning commission recommendation, please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero. Item 7B, received public comment regarding a request for a map amendment to rezone 299 South Drury Street from small lot, single-family to two-family residential, CC-23-24. We had good notice on this item?
Yes, we did.
Jacqueline.
All right, thank you. All right, this next item, as stated, is a request for a map amendment located at 299 South Drury Street from RSS to RT, which is our two-family residential. The subject property is located east of South Drury Street, just north of East 6th Avenue. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. To the south is the Eastern Villa Mobile Home Park, and there to the southwest with the huge oval is the Highland Park Elementary. Here's a street view looking east off of South Drury to the subject property. The current zoning is RSS with similar zoning located to the north. Residential mobile home and RT, ooh, residential mobile home and two-family, two-family and multifamily, that's a lot, is located to the south, and public is for the elementary there to the southwest. The desired use of the area, based on the 2030 comprehensive plan, is high-density Are there any questions for staff?
Counsel, any questions?
I noted the picture, there's an oil tank or something. Is that active, dead?
That, all of it's been, it's been capped. All the equipment has been removed. That's just an older version of the Google street view.
And I also know that there are gonna be some street improvements on Drury. I'm assuming those will be built to city standards?
Yes, that will be discussed with engineering once it comes to that time for development.
There are a lot of school buses that run in and out of there, going back to the Stillwater Schools ag farm at the end of Drury, so it'll need to be well-built.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Jacqueline, on that map, it's single-family zoning to the north, correct?
Yes.
But there's no development there, right?
Correct.
It's all vacant land?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything further questions for staff? I'll go ahead and open this public hearing. I also don't have anyone sign up for this item, so I will close the public hearing. Jacqueline, was there a recommendation from the planning commission?
Yes, planning commission recommends approval of five to zero.
Thank you, councillors.
Motion to accept planning commission's recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second to accept the recommendation, please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero. That takes us to item 7C, received public comment regarding a request from vet specialty group for a specific use permit to allow an animal and pet keeping facility at the property addressed as 401 South Seastar Boulevard, zoned commercial general, CC-23-25. Did we have good notice?
Yes, we did.
Jacqueline.
All right, so this, the next item here is a request for a specific use to operate animal and pet keeping facility located at 401 South Seastar Boulevard. The subject property is located on the northeast side of Seastar Boulevard. Seastar Boulevard comes off of West 6 to the north. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. It is located south of the Spring Hill Suites by Marriott, and to the southwest is the IQ Car Wash location, closer to West 6. Here's a Google street view, looking north off of West 6 towards the subject property. The current zoning of the property is commercial general with similar zoning surrounding the property, except to the north, it is zoned agriculture. The 2030 comprehensive plan, future land use map projects the desired use is, is commercial for the subject property. Okay, the applicant is requesting for an SUP for an animal and pet keeping facility to operate a veterinary specialty surgical clinic. At this time, boarding and daycare services are not being presented as an intended use. This use, the use of animal and pet keeping facility is allowed in CG zoning districts with an SUP. Animal and pet keeping facility is the closest related use we have defined in our code. Yes, okay, the owner of Vet Specialty is here, and so is Katie with Ghost and Associates, which is representing, the developer are here. If you have any further questions, but do you have any questions for staff at this time?
Counsel, any questions for staff?
Just to clarify, the pet keeping is for pre- and post-surgical stays and not for boarding purposes?
Correct.
Would the SUP allow for that without further action by the council? Or would they have to come back and get a different SUP if they were gonna do boarding and like pet daycare and stuff like that?
Hmm, we can, what I would suggest, if you wish it to be that way, to define it in the SUP.
As I said, we'd have to, this SUP will be narrowly defined as a veterinary clinic?
Yep, you can approve it with conditions.
Recommendation, if you would want to limit it to that use.
Yes.
I mean, I don't know that we do necessarily, I'm not sure if anybody's.
Right, but this specific use, it stays with the intent of the use of the property. Our current code states that there is a new owner, it would require a new SUP.
Does the applicant suggest language for the SUP when they apply for it? Like what they, what they are asking for it to be included? Do we know?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, there wasn't anything, just at their vet specialty clinic, that it's surgical in nature.
Okay.
And the planning commission asked similar questions, and the applicants were there, and they answered similarly, that they don't intend for this to be a daycare or boarding, but that it would be for as needed. Apparently, they have clients that come from out of state sometimes, and sometimes there's a need for boarding of an animal post-op.
Okay. Were there questions, counsel? This time, I'll open the public hearing, I'll ask for the owner or the owner's rep, if they'd like to.
I told you to read this, because you're so much taller.
Hi, Katie Purdy, 113 East 8th Ave. I'm with Ghost and Associates, so I'm here on behalf of the applicant, but I do believe one of the operators of this facility is here too, if you have any questions for her. But I was just gonna ask if you have any technical questions, and I would try to answer them on the engineering side.
Counsel, any questions?
I assume, I mean, this is a commercial, like, development area, do they have rules within the development itself? So there are rules based on, so with Seastar, they do have, so I've done some other projects in this area, and one of their requirements is they do ask that they do the required parking per the city code plus an additional five spaces, so that's one, but that doesn't really affect the SUP, that's just something specific to Bourbon Street in their covenant or covenants.
Is there anything in their covenant about animal facilities or anything like that?
No, not that. I know there's no chicken places and no sandwich places, and that doesn't apply to this one, so, because at one point, there was supposed to be a Jimmy John's and a Zaxby's, and those didn't end up happening. So that's a requirement, but no, nothing about pet keeping facilities that I'm aware of.
Okay. Further questions for engineering firm? Is this Danielle Dugit?
I'm actually Carrie, I'm her partner. She is picking her kid up from gymnastics.
You could just introduce yourself.
I'm Carrie McCully. I am Danielle's partner in the vet specialty practice.
Okay, so is this an existing clinic?
It is not.
Oh, this will be a new, a new venture?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have comments that you'd like to make, or are you just here to answer questions?
We were just here to answer questions in case you had them. In reference to boarding, there will be no boarding. So in veterinary medicine, there's boarding, like you go out of town and people keep your pets, and then there's hospitalization. So patients will be hospitalized, but there will be no boarding.
Okay. And you wouldn't be offended if we specifically said no traditional boarding?
No, I mean, there, there won't be any boarding. It's a specialty hospital.
All right, okay. Counsel, further questions?
No.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
This time, I'll close the public hearing. I don't have anyone else sign up to speak. I'll close the public hearing. Jacqueline, does planning commission have a recommendation on the item?
Yes, planning commission recommended approval of a vote of five to zero.
Did planning commission make any specific, ask for any specific language to be included in the SUP?
No, they did not put any conditions on it.
Councillors?
I move, we approve, or approve the recommendation from planning commission with the added condition that this not be a boarding facility.
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve the SUP with additional language restricting its use to not being a boarding facility. Please vote.
Okay, we're voting. I think we need to clarify that, because the use is allowed under the SUP, technically, boarding has to be allowed, but it's just not the traditional boarding type that we're talking about for overnight stays for pets, so.
And I think I said traditional boarding, did I not?
Yeah, he did.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page, that we'd be approving the SUP with the condition that boarding allowed only incidental to vet surgery.
Pre- and post-surgical staying is fine.
Okay.
Under my motion.
As long as we're clear, then there's.
That was my understanding of the motion.
No changes to the motion, okay, then we're good.
So we have a vote of four to zero to approve that SUP with the understanding.
Yes, and now I also understand.
Okay, we're all on the same page.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Item 8A, consider direction to staff on recruitment process for city manager. Kristi Driscoll, welcome back.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone. With Mr. McNichols' recent announcement of his upcoming retirement, we must now to fill those big shoes. You want me to give a moment for the boos? So there are several executive recruitment firms that are available, however, very few actually specialize in public sector, and that's what we wanna focus on. There are four key players which are listed in my report to council. We have preliminary information out and responses back from three of the four. We wanna have a little bit more time to get one more in. There's two on the list that come highly recommended to us, one is based in Oklahoma, and the other we've worked with previously. So we will be pursuing those, but just wanted to let you know that we have reached out to all four of those key players, so I'm happy to answer any questions or I have a recommendation.
Councillors, questions?
So the intent is that staff will choose the firm we work with?
Correct.
When that's what the authorization you're asking for today?
Correct, sir.
All right.
We wanted to gather some more information with them, specific to your intent and what you all wish to have in a full recruitment process, and ensure that they can work with you through every step of recruitment and research of applicants, vetting of those background information, social media checks, all the way up to negotiation of salary and compensation on your behalf.
Okay.
They'll work closely and directly with council once selected.
What sort of a timeframe do you anticipate for the selection of a firm?
We've looked back, and we've got some information that we hope to have somebody in place in two to four months, probably the four-month side is more realistic.
Yeah, well, I actually meant for the selection of the firm itself.
For the selection, we would like to do it the sooner we can, since Mr. McNichols has announced it, I believe by June.
Yeah, so like within the next week, within the next two weeks?
I think if you'll give us two weeks, we'll have somebody in place.
Okay. In fact, he told me he's going to Colorado at the end of May.
I know. We're still in discussions, too.
He's worked from Colorado before.
He's telling me that there's no cell service there.
Any other questions, counsel? Comments, Mr. McNichols?
Wet cellphone.
So jealous. Kristi, what's your recommendation for us?
I recommend to authorize staff to continue discussions and select the firm best able to meet the city's specific objectives in the recruitment of the position, and authorize the current city manager to sign the negotiated contract for services.
Counsel?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept staff's recommendation, please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero. Thank you, Kristi. Item nine, ordinances. Ordinance on first read is ordinance 3518, and ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 619 West 12th Avenue from Office O to Public P, that's tonight's item. Is there questions, comment, or action on the item?
I move to advance ordinance 3518 to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance, please vote. The vote of four to zero, ordinance 3518 is advanced to second reading. Ordinance 3519 is an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 299 South Drury Street from small lot, single-family residential to two-family residential district, also from tonight. Counsel?
Motion to advance ordinance 3519.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance, please vote. The vote of four to zero, ordinance 3519 is advanced to second reading. Reports from the officers in the board, Ms. Carley?
Nothing to report.
Mr. McNichols?
Thank you. I would say that this is reasonably timely because of the month of the year, and also because of the weather forecast for the next few days. Oklahoma has funny weather. Stillwater Emergency Management is hosting a storm spotter training course Wednesday, February 15th, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM in the Stillwater Community Center and the Winfrey Houston Theater. The course is presented by the National Weather Service, and it is free and open to the public. This is a great opportunity for the community to learn more about severe weather and how your community interacts with the National Weather Service. This level of training occurs in Stillwater approximately every three years, and it is a good refresher course for those who have attended in the past. And if you're in law enforcement, you get two hours of CLEET credit for the course.
Excellent. It honestly sounds fascinating, and I'm gonna try to be there, but storm spotter training just sounds like it'd be a lot of fun. I think we all kind of just generally get it if you lived in Oklahoma very long, but maybe a professional course would be good.
My wife and I are planning to be there as well, and she's pumped up.
It's a good sort of late Valentine's kind of thing.
There you go.
Does it just teach people how to go out on their back porches?
I think it's gonna be a little more technical than that.
Is it coming this way?
Vice mayor?
Residents are encouraged to purchase rain barrels through the Central Oklahoma Stormwater Alliance. The barrels are good for the environment and can potentially save residents money on water bills by harvesting rainwater for future use. Orders, sorry, orders can be placed, must be placed by mail by April 27th. Online orders must be placed by April 30th at upcycle-products.com/okprograms/stillwater.
There's a link on the website.
I mean, there's gonna be a link somewhere. Orders must be picked up at the Stillwater Convenience Collection Center on Saturday, May 6, 2023, between 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM. And for more information, you can visit stillwater.org, or you can email zachhenson@stillwater.org, and you can also call 405-533-8436. That's easier, I think that might be easier. Just call Zach.
Thank you. Councillor Hawkins?
Election Day is tomorrow, Tuesday, February 14th. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Voters need to go to their normal polling location to participate. Included on the ballot will be city councillor, Stillwater Public Schools bond election, and the Payne County 3/8 sales tax. We encourage every registered voter to learn about these propositions that affect infrastructure and quality of life within Payne County. For more information and for sample ballots, go to votepaynecounty.com or www.elections-ok.gov.
Yeah, and if you don't know your polling place, that OK Voter Portal, really easy, just put your name and your birthday in, and it'll show you where you're supposed to go to vote. Seven to seven tomorrow. Councillor Clark?
A reminder that city offices will be closed for Presidents' Day on Monday, February 20th. Trash and recycling will start, will still be collected, but will not yard waste. Set your carts up by 6:00 AM, because collection routes may vary. I'd like to go off script for a moment. I had a neighbor knock on my door a few days ago, wondering if I knew water was rushing down my driveway, and I didn't know that, so I went outside to investigate it, and there was water rushing from my neighbor's yard into my driveway and into the street, and I called and reported it, and they were there within an hour, and figured out what was wrong, and said, we need more help, and the next morning, they had it fixed, but the crew kept us in the loop, and they understood, even though they are water crew who are digging in the dirt, that they're still part of a customer service organization, and I appreciated it, and I wanted to say something.
Thank you for saying so. Appreciate that. I will let you know that the public library is hosting a drive-through shred event on Saturday, February 25th, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM at the library on 1107 South Duck. Residents may bring up to two boxes per vehicle of material to be shredded. It's a free event. Donations are accepted to help with the associated cost, but they're not required to participate. All right, I don't see anything else on the city council agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council, please vote. The vote of four to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now adjourned. At this time, we will move to the Stillwater Economic Development Authority agenda, and I will call this meeting for February 13th, 2023, to order. Is there recommended action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, please vote. The vote of four to zero, the consent docket's approved. Jump down to item five, and consider Brick Building LLC's request for assistance in development financing for property located at.
And I didn't know that, so I went outside to investigate it and there was water rushing from my neighbor's yard into my driveway and into the street. And I called and reported it and they were there within an hour and figured out what was wrong and said, we need more help. And the next morning they had it fixed, but the crew kept us in the loop and they understood, even though they are water crew who are digging in the dirt, that they're still part of a customer service organization and I appreciated it and I wanted to say something.
Thank you for saying so. Appreciate that. I will let you know that the public library is hosting a drive-through shred event on Saturday, February twenty-fifth from nine to eleven AM at the library on eleven oh seven South Duck. Residents may bring up to two boxes per vehicle of material to be shredded. It's a free event. Donations are accepted to help with the associated cost, but they're not required to participate. All right, I don't see anything else on the city council agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council. Please vote. The vote of four to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now adjourned. At this time, we will move to the Stillwater Economic Development Authority Agenda and I will call this meeting for February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three to order. Is there recommended action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. The vote of four to zero, the consent docket's approved. Jump down to item five and consider Brick Building LLC's request for assistance in development financing for property located at six twenty-two South Main and six twenty-four South Main pursuant to the reinvestment, Stillwater Reinvestment Plan. Mr. Brady Moore?
Yes, good evening, trustees. Brady Moore with the city manager's office. And tonight, we're excited to bring to you another TIF project from our downtown campus link, TIF District Number Three. Drew Williamson, the owner of Brick Building LLC, is the developer for this project. He is here tonight and before I have him come speak to you about the redevelopment, I'll quickly go over some of the project details and the recommendation from the Citizen Implementation Committee. The project is a redevelopment of two buildings at six twenty-two and six twenty-four South Main Street. That includes a five thousand square foot restaurant with an attached bar, a twenty-eight-hundred square foot private dining space, covered outdoor dining, and four nine hundred square foot Airbnb apartments on the top floor. The purchase price of the two buildings is one point six million. The estimated renovation expenses of two point three million and furniture and fixtures estimated cost of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for total development costs of four point five million dollars. On the application, the developer requested one million in TIF assistance. On January thirtieth, the TIF Implementation Committee met and heard Drew's project. The committee voted four to zero for approval and their recommendation was for the total amount of one million to be paid in arrears and to include the one cent of the city's two cents of undedicated sales tax towards the project. Excuse me. I'll now invite Mr. Williamson to come tell you more about the project and then I'll come back to answer any questions that you have.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, counsel. I'm going to walk you through the project as I see it and then after I follow up with that, I will answer any questions you may have. So this will be, this is the corner building, six twenty-four. It is the entrance area. As you see there, there is brick fill from an area that you can get into six twenty-two that was put in decades ago. We'll take that out. You'd be able to walk in. Hostess will be able to seat you or you'd be able to go in to the lounge, which would have a nice bar set up and would also seat around forty guests. This is looking west through that door all the way down. Currently, there is another arch area that we would be knocking out as well so that guests and staff can get to the other building and utilize the existing portion of the kitchen that's in the other building. And then at the end of this building would be the access to the Airbnbs that are going up top. And then in front of that would be the kitchen for this restaurant. That's the second archway that we would be taking out. This is the basement. It's a twenty-eight hundred square foot basement. It would house an area for people to be able to utilize, we'd be able to utilize it for overflow dining and for guests to be able to rent out the facility, rent out the area for private events. At the very back of it, there is a pretty good sized room that was originally the boiler room that has a pretty neat, pretty neat area that we can put tables in. This is the top room of the second floor of six twenty-four. Originally, when designed a few years ago with the architect, they saw that as a banquet facility. I didn't think we needed any more of those, so what I envisioned there is actually going to be four, and they're going to be about eight hundred square foot Airbnb's with access from the inside of the first floor as well as exiting from a deck that would be around the whole outside of the building. This is a picture looking at the shared wall. This is looking south inside the six twenty-two and just gives you an idea of where the guests would walk through there. And then the bar area would most likely run down that south wall and then seating throughout. Again, looking down all the way through, all the restrooms that are going to be utilized in both buildings would be in the six twenty-two, so the guests would be able to walk through there in two different areas to utilize that. In the very back is the dirty side of the kitchen and we're going to keep that the way it is currently and utilize that. Front view. And then this is a view from the rear of the building looking out front, so about twenty-eight hundred square foot of space to utilize. Picture of the kitchen, nothing there would change, but it does give great access to the corner building for a restaurant that we wouldn't have to put any additional money into building out that portion of it. And that is it. Any questions that I may answer for you?
Trustees?
So what's your timetable? Closing September first, Lambert Construction would be doing the construction and they are saying seven to nine months from there. So this all started with needing to meet the needs for Zenotti's Wine Bar. I approached the existing owner wanting to purchase that, move it across the street. Once I saw what was there, I felt like that not only could we put a restaurant in there that would allow for a fine dining area in the city of Stillwater, but it would also complement the area and everything else that's there. So Zenotti's would stay across the street. Really, the but for here and why I'm in front of you today is I could buy the corner building, move Zenotti's across the street and do exactly what I need to do to justify that. What I'm looking to do is really build out something that you could pick up, you could put in downtown Dallas, put in downtown Oklahoma City and Kansas City and create a destination location for people that, not only the citizens here, but for people that aren't in town, that don't live in town or they're coming to visit. So I feel like we have a good plan in place to do that. Great, thank you.
I was curious, you said the Airbnb would have a deck around the out, is that around the front of the building or around the back of the building?
It's going to be, the Airbnb would, or the deck would be over the top of the sidewalk area. And the original plans from the previous owner, they worked through that with the city and it was accepted. And it would be about an eight foot wide deck. Underneath that deck, there would also be a thousand square foot for outdoor seating for the restaurant.
Is that on the, on Main Street side or Seventh Street? Yeah, that's what I thought.
It would actually go around the corner a little bit too, though. And then there would be an egress set of steps off of that deck.
Anything that would make the Airbnb ADA compliant? Would there be any way for?
So from my understanding is that the building itself falls into an existing location, under existing building code, that it would not need anything or to have any elevators added to it to be able to utilize the space.
You mentioned that the plans for the deck had been previously sort of drawn up and I don't know if that's?
Yeah, it was in the packet, but let me pull it up.
Yeah, no, I've got them. I'm just wondering about, that was previously vetted by the city in terms of the design and engineering and that sort of thing? Is that what, would that?
That's what I'm being told from the architect, yes.
That was my understanding. I think that, I thought that was, that kind of almost happened already before and.
I'm not a hundred percent sure on this, but I believe that possibly decades ago that it was, that there was a deck there and that's why there are two doors, existing doors on that second floor area.
Okay. Well, I think it looks fantastic and I think, I will just say, one of the questions people sometimes have about tax increment financing and whether we really need this kind of thing is, isn't this stuff going to happen on its own without us providing incentive financing? And I would point to this building specifically as a very good example of stuff not happening. And for us to be able to step in and say, we're, you know, we have some availability to do tax increment financing here and actually get a building that has been sitting vacant for?
Thirteen.
Thirteen years? And put it back into productive use on one of the main corners of our downtown area is a pretty darn good reason for me to say, let's figure out how to help make that happen. So I know you, Drew, have a number of successful food and beverage based businesses here in the community and so having somebody who's got the experience and knows what they're doing to be able to make something like this happen is really exciting. And to me, again, just a perfect example of why we put the TIF in place to try to be able to make stuff like this happen. So I'm super excited about it.
It is really cool that so many of the proposals that have come before us are from, are from our community. They're not coming from outside of our community. And that's a really exciting thing to see you invest in our community here.
I would tell you that my staff is really excited about it because we will utilize existing staff to create the atmosphere that we've got, so we look forward to making it work.
Excellent. Thank you for being here.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Brady, can I ask you to clarify what I thought I heard and that is, for some reason, there's not a requirement to come under compliance of ADA for accessibility? Did I mishear that or is that, did I hear that correctly?
Well, I can't, there is an existing building code, IEBC, I believe it was called. I'm not certified in that. Jeff was here earlier, he is, but I believe what it is, and you see this on other buildings downtown that I even looked to for mine, but yeah, it's, if there is a second floor that you want to repurpose for private, like living for like Airbnb's, I guess that is open to public, but you have to state that in your terms and conditions when you post it, that there's no ADA accessibility, but you have that ability to not have to put an elevator in every building that you remodel. Now, for the restaurant on the first floor, absolutely. If it's a public space, that's going to require all ADA accessibility.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I think most of those apartments that have been repurposed downtown on the second floors of those buildings are not.
Correct, yeah.
Are not elevator accessible.
Unfortunately, sometimes it's not just a financial decision, it's just a structural decision.
I just want to understand that, thank you.
Yes, it's a great question. So as we look at the financial projections on this project, I can pull the Excel spreadsheet up if you'd like to see it. You know, when we look at those things, those increment values of the ad valorem taxes, the personal property taxes, and the one cent, if you so choose, or two cents of new business sales tax to go through the project, we're showing that and it's an estimated one million dollar payback would be in about thirteen years. So, and again, if we're doing the payment in arrears, it collects what it collects. So from the accounting and the insurance side, it's much, it's cleaner because it just, as those increments come in, we can then relay them to the developer.
Would it be structured to pay back faster if possible? How would the payment structure be done? I mean, if more is collected, would we be able to pay that sooner and potentially retire it in nine years instead of thirteen years?
Well, exactly, yes. If we were doing upfront financing, because this is just, you're awarding him the total amount of assistance that we can contribute, it's what the TIF collects. There's no note that we're repaying. So if it collects it back in seven years, he gets that in seven years. You're correct.
Yeah, it's not a structured, like you get this much amount?
There's no pilot. That's correct. Yep, it collects and pays quickly. And he gave us conservative sales tax numbers, so we're, I would anticipate that it would pay back much quicker than the thirteen years. Yes, sir.
We still would have, we've got a, we'll do a development agreement and all that stuff will be spelled out and we'll bring that back at some point.
That's correct. Yep, tonight, you know, really, we're just getting kind of the guidance from this conversation. And then you're authorizing the motion that I have for you tonight that I can read here in a little bit, is just allowing us to execute a redevelopment agreement with the redeveloper. And the one, the city manager and deputy city manager have recommended that one cent be, of the undedicated, two cents be dedicated to this project.
Mayor, if I may clarify just something procedurally because the Center for Economic Development Law will work through with staff the redevelopment agreement, the proposed motion tonight is for staff to continue to do that and to authorize the general manager to sign it. If you would want the redevelopment agreement to come back to the trustees, you would just simply omit the authorized general manager to sign and execute those terms and then once a redevelopment agreement is proposed, they would bring that back for your consideration.
No, I mean, personally, I'm fine with that being negotiated and signed as long as we understand that it's in arrears, it's going to be paid as the money comes in, not necessarily over a given length of time, but just as the money's available.
Correct, yes.
I mean, again, it sounds like a, you know, if this kind of incentive is what enables a project like this to happen, then I'm all for it. Questions, further questions, trustees? Would you read your recommendation for us?
Yes. Motion to direct staff to enter into a redevelopment agreement with Brick Building LLC and authorize the general manager and legal counsel to negotiate, finalize, and execute the terms of the redevelopment agreement for the restaurant, bar, and Airbnb's at six twenty-two South Main Street and six twenty-four South Main Street.
Trustees?
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero. Looking forward to it. All right, nothing else on the CETA agenda? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Move motion and a second to adjourn CETA. Please vote. We're adjourned with a vote of four to zero. This time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Is there action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve its consent docket?
Second.
Move motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. Consent docket's approved with a vote of four to zero. Under item five, general orders, we'll consider approval of a professional services agreement with Turbo Systems for the overhaul of engine generators at Stillwater Energy Center. And Mr. Lauren Smith is going to give us a mechanical lesson tonight.
Yes, and if I can't answer it, the expert in the back can. Good evening, trustees. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. The Stillwater Energy Center uses three engines to produce electricity. Each engine is turbocharged to force air into the cylinders for combustion. During the next service interval, six turbochargers will require a major overhaul. This requires removal and shipment of each turbocharger to a repair shop off-site. Specifications for the turbochargers overhaul were prepared by staff and three quotes were received in accordance with the city's purchasing manual. Based on the cost analysis completed by staff using Turbo Systems US Inc. as the best value for the SUA. They not only provide the lowest overhaul cost, they have estimated that they can turn around the turbochargers with reduced delays. Staff is requesting purchase approval for the six turbocharger overhaul at the quoted cost of ninety-two thousand, one hundred seventy-one dollars and twelve cents and to authorize expenditures up to two hundred thousand dollars, which includes contingency. This contingency covers any repairs not foreseen prior to disassembly of the six turbochargers. The extent of repair parts outside the agreed upon scope, if needed, will not be known until the turbochargers are disassembled and inspected. Should any additional repairs be needed, staff needs predetermined expenditure approval to not cause delays. Each lost day of engine availability equates to four thousand dollars in lost capacity payments, so time is of the essence. I have a motion here, but I will pause to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lauren. Trustees?
Lauren, is this not, this isn't, it isn't the case that because it's a certain brand name, we need that brand to fix the system? I feel like that's something we've talked about in the past.
Yeah, yeah, so this is one of the cases where the turbochargers are not proprietary towards Zilla, which is a good thing. And so Kurt did quite a bit of investigating out there and found that the turbochargers are actually manufactured by ABB and Kurt has made contact. This company, Turbo Systems Inc., is tied in with ABB. So, so yes, we were able to actually get some competition here and save quite a bit of money on the turnaround time cost. I think Ward Zilla was proposed in seventy-five days. You know, Turbo Systems Inc. is proposed in thirty-three days, which is a tremendous cost savings for us.
Just seems like a rare thing that it's not there.
You are correct, yeah.
Do we take them all at the same time?
Two at a time.
Two at a time?
Yeah.
So we'll do two and then get those back and send the? So we'll do two and then get those back and send the third one in?
Yes, correct.
And this, but this is for all three?
This is for all three engines, so there's two turbochargers on each engine and the union will be brought offline. A crew from this company will come and help disassemble the turbochargers, pack them, ship them. And during this same time, Kurt has scheduled a service interval in the middle. So every year, we take about a week outage on each unit to do maintenance, regular maintenance intervals. And so during this time, while those are being worked on, they'll be completing that as well.
What's our usage like on these engines? It's higher than we sort of anticipated, isn't it?
Yeah, absolutely. So it was funny when we did the first modeling back, oh gosh, in 2013, 2014, we anticipated these engines would run about 600 hours a year. This last year, we ran 4,500 hours. And so the market, and we had a feeling that the market would love them because just what they are, they chase the wind and the renewables and the SPPs, so they're very flexible and they utilize them a lot.
Lauren, in October, we approved electronic wastegate upgrades that were going to happen during the same interval and those do have to be purchased from Ward Zilla and installed by Ward Zilla. Can you talk to us about how that is going to be handled from a timeline perspective and how that affects these down days that we see here?
You bet. So initially, we were hoping that we could do all those together at the same time, but after we started having some coordination calls with Ward Zilla on how that really would look, it didn't pencil out. It wasn't, it was going to be more costly, there were going to be more mobilizations and D-mobes. And so when Ward Zilla provided the proposal, it was continuous to start with one unit, change the wastegate out, move to the next one. The key point is, is that the turbo, the engines have to be operational to complete the commissioning on the wastegates. And so without the turbochargers, they're not operational and the timing of when the turbochargers are going to arrive, you know, these are unknowns that are hard to account service technicians for. So once this is complete, Kurt will schedule that there would really start the wastegate installation on each unit.
So basically, I'm sorry, so basically, all the units will be back up and running and then we'll take them down again for three days or so each to?
Yeah, for about three days apiece to do that, to do that part. And really, the bright side with going with Turbo Systems is that indirectly, we are throwing it all the way in. Ward Zilla had 75 days and this is 33 days and we're just adding nine more, so we're still gaining. But on the other side of that, we really feel like getting the turbochargers back, commissioning them, proving, okay, they work, and then let's move to the next thing rather than try to change a bunch of stuff and then go, oh, man, what?
Which part's not working?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like my automotive work at home.
Yes.
Which one of these parts that I just installed doesn't work?
That part didn't do it now.
Any further questions, trustees? What's your recommendation for us, Lauren?
Motion to approve a professional services agreement with Turbo Systems U.S. Inc. for overhaul of engine generator turbochargers at Stillwater Energy Center and approve budget amendments appropriating $200,000. $92,171.12 total cost plus contingency.
Trustees?
Motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the staff's recommendation. Please vote. To approve with a vote of four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing further on SUA. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned and that concludes our meetings for the evening.